Calling in to order, we present the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, and veritable in justice and moral.
Good evening, everyone, welcome. I'll thank you all for being here tonight. It's a special evening as we recognize our 2016 Danbury Public School retirees. Before we get into that, just so the audience is aware, although many of them are already, our chairperson is not here for the rest of the evening from school year and our vice chair could not make it, may come late, so that is why I am in the chairperson's seat. With that said, if Mr. Ginelli could please do the roll call.
Eileen Alfreds. Gladys Cooper. Michael Ferguson. Here. Richard Holley.
Here.
Ginelli. Here. Patrick Johnson.
Here.
Patrick Carr. Here. Katrina. Here. Kathleen Melanero.
Here.
A professor. Here. Holly Robinson.
Here.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, now right into recognition where we get to recognize our retirees. The way I think we're going to do this is we have a little gift for those who are retiring and we want to recognize all those who were able to come this evening. We have Kim Thompson, who is going to read off the name and then name up the retiree and then if the retiree could just come around so we can off, shake their hand and thank them for their service and we can hand them their gift back. It would be great.
Great. Thank you. This is always a really nice meeting because it's really fun for me to be able to put a lot of names to faces of people that I haven't seen yet, which is a good thing. But I continue to be impressed with the length of services so many of you have donated to the children of Danbury. So as the HR director, I certainly like to say thank you to all of you. I know how hard your jobs are and we are very grateful for the years that you've given us. If I miss someone at the end, please don't be shy about identifying yourself. But I'm going to just kick it off here. The first one, with 14 years as a family and consumer science teacher at Danbury High School, Danielle Earthman.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have a media specialist who has been at Ellsworth Avenue and in the district for 16 years, Catherine Baker.
Sure. So they don't get dissed. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
With 42 years, and I gotta say I got edged out by two others, but 42 years at Danbury High School and our retiring principal, Mrs. LaCattia.
One more year. Mrs. Donovan, we're sorry, you gotta think.
Okay, speech and language pathologist at Broadview with 23 years of service, Roseanne Hutton. Next, we have 22 years of service, special education teacher, most recently at the Early Childhood Center, Mary Ann Chikroni. Both have gifts. 18 years, speech and language pathologist, most recently at Hayestown School, Mary Connell. Next, from Danbury High School, who was teaching French for many years with us, 43 years, Aleen Nelson.
Stay there, we'll come to you.
Yeah, I made my grand entrance earlier.
We'll make it to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you so much, congratulations. Thank you very much, congratulations.
Alexandra.
Also with 43 years as an Italian teacher, Rosalia DeMian. Turning to school nursing, it says here at Broadview Middle School, though I suspect many other locations as well, with 22 years, Nurse Gaffenta. Next, we have 10 years as a custodian, recently at Broadview Middle School, Maria Hricans. Next, with 23 years as a special education teacher at Millridge Primary, Sharon O'Wathlin. From Broadview, a social studies teacher for 25 years, Michelle Rosenthal. Next, we have from South Street School, recently in second grade with 17 years of service, Patricia Sealy. Next is something we started with Patricia Sealy 17 years ago at South Street School, Lynn Shade, 17 years. From most recently at Danbury High School and Pembroke School, a teacher of our hearing impaired students, with 37 years of service, Mary Silvestri. And with 33 years as a speech and language pathologist, most recently at South Street and Shelter Rock Schools, we have Janet Smith. Did I miss anybody that's in the room? We have a long list of retirees, but I hope I got everybody. Again, from my point of view, thank you all for all that you've done and you will all be missed. Come back and see us.
Sincerely, we need substitutes. I too just want to congratulate everyone. Mr. Amendment, as I walk by, I see the commitment that you give our children and really appreciate it every day. You will miss them, you know, when faculty retire, you lose your children. When a principal retires, he loses his faculty. Balance that off a little bit. But you're always welcome back here sincerely and we wish you well and good luck. Thank you for coming.
Thank you all again. One more round of applause. We are dismissed.
Do we have to go to school tomorrow?
Close to 900 years.
No, I'm fine, I have my hand.
Okay, so we'll move on to public participation. The Board welcomes public participation and asks that speakers please limit their comments to three minutes. Speakers may offer objective comments of school operations and programs that concern them. The Board will not permit any expression of personal complaints or dependentary comments about Board of Education personnel and students or against any person connected with the Danbury Public School system. We have one sign. Allison Villanueva, does that one you're right?
Good evening. Allison Villanueva, principal at Shelter Rock School, and right behind you, this is Sharon Maltitom, president of our PTO, and this is Wendy Ray, treasurer of our PTO. I know that we're on the docket today and we are very anxiously awaiting what the turnout is going to be, but we just wanted to say on behalf of the parents, students, as well as our fantastic PTO, thank you for hearing what's been going on with our school. I know the entire district has been growing, but we have been growing exponentially and whatever turnout may be, we thank you for just hearing and for supporting Danbury in part two, whatever it takes.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Like what? No one's here. Okay, moving on to consent calendar, is there motion, please?
That the Board of Education approves the act on consent calendar for exhibit 16-92 through 1690 through 16-95 as recommended.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, simply ever saying aye. Aye. Opposed? No one staying? Motion passes. Are there any employee representatives in the audience? Student representatives, it always looks like we have lots of them, so floor is yours.
So I haven't had any updates for a while, but I finally have one today. So we actually did have our last meeting of the year and then we also had our final presentation, which I made today for our committee of state. We had a presentation for the state board of education. So our committee has made a couple of conclusions for the year. As I mentioned a few weeks ago, we have been focusing on extracurricular equity and there are a whole host of issues, were that because we did a study, we actually did our own independent study and we found that urban schools are generally able to offer half the extracurricular activity opportunities as suburban districts. Danbury High School is actually, when we did our study, Danbury High School happened to be one of the schools that we did our study for, or we were one of our own subjects, which is kind of funny. But we had the most extracurricular activities of any of the districts that were surveyed. So I think that is something we can give ourselves a pat on the back for. It didn't really matter, geography, nothing else mattered, it was just, we still had the most. And what we did find is that extracurriculars are important, they play a big role in student experience and state board of education should be considering them more seriously. Right now, they have this general tendency to focus only on test scores or absentee rates, but a lot of the times they don't really look at the holistic experience. And so our goal as a committee was to show the board of education, listen, you have to start looking at more than just the numbers. And so now we have, we introduced a plan, we introduced an idea that the state board of education should add a 13th indicator to the 12 indicators for school or district-wide success that it recently produced. Essentially, these 12 indicators are part of the next generation's duty accountability. The idea is that for school accountability, the idea is that there are a number of things or indicators that would suggest whether or not the school is doing its job in properly educating students. And we believe that extracurricular activities should play a role in determining how well the school is educating its students and offering opportunities to its students. And so that one of those 13 indicators now, we want to add that 13 indicator on there, which would be extracurriculars. And I think that would be good for Danbury High School because people across the state would then look at us and say, well, you know, we're using any resources that we can to provide these opportunities to students. So in the event that that 13 indicator is added on there, I think it'll be a help to our district. It'll certainly show how well we are doing with our students. So that is the update for now and I think a lot of my work for this year is done, but it's been a pleasure to work with all of you all for this year. Thank you so much for having me and I really enjoyed every minute of this, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kathleen, after your gradurs. Where are you going to school?
It's kind of up in the air. I committed to Wesleyan, so that's the idea right now. I'm on the waitlist department, but I'm committed to Wesleyan, so.
Well, best of luck and thank you for all your work. Moving on, we have no presentation, so we'll move right into action.
That the Board of Education approve and set the school district budget leave out for 125,986,000, 1.7% for the fiscal year 2016-2017 in accordance with 16-96.
Motion made, seconded by Mr. Thompson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, simply ever saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Got a touch? Motion passes.
Next, that the Board of Education approve the educational specifications for the elementary classrooms at Shelter Rock, Carolina for school in accordance with 16-97.
Motion made and seconded by Mr. Patrick Pessa. Is there any discussion?
No clarifications. Would you like us to put in four classrooms or is that sufficient for submission to the city?
Respect can be, laws of portables, that's all the state.
We don't have to put.
No, it doesn't exist. What we're looking for, and just clarifying, the funding is coming from city dollars and we believe some capital money at the city side and there was some articles and papers that was confusing with the Alliance District grant for small program we're working on. So I would clarify that in part of the pay.
I'm just out of curiosity, do we have an expectation date?
Well, as Joe had indicated, because we're going through the state, it requires your motion, then it requires the motion by the city council. Vernon, say you'll file.
Yeah, June 7th is the council meeting. I will file this on the 8th. I don't envision these for day one of the school year, to be honest. We are, it's a tight timeline. State is also putting a great switche on this because of the size of the project in Danbury already. I mean, the Shelter Rock's already gone some additions, so my sense is in conversation with them already, they're going to, you know, read I's and read cross T's, so I think we've got to mindful that. My sense is, I guarantee honest, mid-September, I enter. There's availability out there in the system right now, there's modules that are built already. I've had conversations with vendors already, but we obviously have, we can't bid until the state lets us the projects, it's even worth a bid. And the wrinkle is, there's with 63% funding, the modules are, you know, about $450,000, so I mean, it's advantageous to go through city, city and state through comparison.
And by doing it this way, we have four additions.
Yeah, to go, we could afford the new two, but in reality, we're in back here next year having to add one to it. Because students are clearly here right now, there's really, you're going to add two classes in Shelter Rock in the next two years, easily.
A little juggling early September, huh?
Yeah, I think there's going to be some creative, maybe utilize the media center sign, but they'll be nice four air-conditioned modules, they'll fire one, they'll be nice.
Any further discussion? Okay, motion made, seconded by all those in favor, simply ever saying aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes, moving on.
That the Board of Education approve the 2016-2017 tuition rates in accordance with 16-98.
Okay, motion made, seconded by Mr. Patrick Pessa. Any discussion? All those in favor, simply ever saying aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? Anyone abstaining? Motion passes. Okay, superheadings reported.
Uh, you in fact, Bill, do you want to speak to the racial imbalance in the year that we've dealt with?
As the Board knows, each year we'll monitor for racial imbalance, for racial bounds. What that means, the easy way of looking at it is they take all students, put them together, crunch them up, and they come out with a percentage of diversity in the district. There are two key indicators. One is if you're 25% above a particular, of the district average, or 25% below, you're racially imbalanced and you have to, by law, submit a plan to the State Department of Education to become racially balanced, become a diverse school. We do not have any schools in that category. The lower standard is impending racial imbalance and that means you're starting to get upwards of, close to that 25%. We actually have two schools, Moore Street and South Street. If you're 15% or above, but not 25%, you are then considered to be drifting toward that particular number. You're not required to submit a plan. And quite frankly, as we've been talking at the cabinet level, we're really looking at our demographer, if the numbers go up, and what's happening in some cases is new condo developments go up and they suddenly populate a school a different way than has been the norm. So we have to look at the concept possibly of pocket redistricting. We might take one cul-de-sac and those kids from school A to school B and then bring ourselves back. At this point, though, the thing for the Board to keep in mind is we have to take no action whatsoever. They're just saying your numbers are starting to drift up in these two schools.
Dr., so what percentage is current at Moore Street and where are they not at Moore Street except, are they at 15 or low rate?
They're above 15 or wouldn't be notified, so that's the initial trigger. The absolute imbalance at Moore Street is 19.67, so getting close to 20%. And South Street is 17.47, so getting close to 18%. I think it's important to note with the Board, these are based upon the October 1 official enrollment numbers and those fluctuate every year from school to school, they go up and down, diversity goes up, it goes down. So we monitor it very closely, but at this point in time, it's not a big concern of ours, it's just something on the radar to keep in mind.
Has the number been moving in a gradual drift in a specific direction or is it sort of a quick pop that's out?
I'd have to look back, Pat, but I would say it's pretty much in a gradual place. One school that we used to have on our radar big time was the Magnum School and the state has now recognized the nature of Magnum School, so they moved those aside. If you're looking at your report, you'll see AIS really up there, but because it's a Magnum School, it pulls in the adversity first in the region, so that one's kind of in a way in a sense. So we have this kind of ebb and flow type of thing, but no real spike right now.
Thank you.
Number two, on May 26th, we went to the School Governance Council meeting. You were there. Joe and myself, we did a presentation, about 90 minutes. We talked about much of the material Katie brought presented. The takeaway is this, that we have an active group up here who wants to be a partner with us, who wants to share advocacy for all of the schools in Danbury and work with our lobbyists to create a plan and then actually operationalize that plan. We walked away pretty happy that we have that kind of support. They are going to meet this summer, actually. They plan on shooting in the cabinets so that they can talk to them about few things that Danbury needs and then they're going to start their conversations early in August and then follow up with different activities in the fall. Rich, you had anything more?
The enthusiasm and participation was large. What we're going to do is we're going to spearhead it through the Community Relations Committee and we're going to meet during the summer to walk with the lobbyists in order to get our groundwork done so that we could have sort of a plan of a text or say, come the fall. During the summer, we'll need to do some brainstorming as to what issues we want to advocate for, how we're going to do it, to get a list of the targeted individuals that we'd like to meet. So we're going to use the summertime basically to do a whole detail work so that when we kick off this campaign, we'll be ready to go. There's a lot of enthusiasm on that. The high school is on board, Pembroke is on board, we have a couple of other schools that are going to join. The effectiveness is going to be is that it's a city community project, so that this effort is not going to be solely the Board of Education or its members, but a representative group of the district, the students, parents, industry leaders, council people, et cetera. We look forward to it, there's good enthusiasm looking to. And the most important thing, I think, is to get it organized. You have to be an organized group to do this. We're taking our leadership from the lobbyists. I think with that. I think with that, we've learned a lot, she gave us some points, we're gonna do this again during the summer, so we're hoping to be a very effective, a very effective organization. The good thing about this is regardless who's in charge, or who's on the board, we have set on the Community Relations Committee three agenda items, this being one, so whether I'm here or I'm not here, somebody else in this role will still share this and accept in a sense, so that we keep the fires lit. It's unrealistic to think that this is a one-year type of situation, it's gonna be multiple years, and we're gonna need the enthusiasm and the work to go on for a period of time. So we don't wanna have it for like a six-month shotgun blast, and then die out, and be resurrected a couple, three years later, this got to be a continual pattern. So we're very excited about it, and they've committed to work through the summer, which I appreciate, so it's very good. Thank you.
I had it too, I was on here, if you didn't indulge me. We're applying for the Perkins Grant, for Innovation Grant, and we need to have it in minutes, so, Fo, you have the information to the minutes?
I have it.
Thank you. That takes care, the government wants to make sure I presented it to you, so we have. The other thing is, just the Grossman Family Foundation is visiting Danbury today, they have been the, really, the force behind a lot of our extended day program. Our action plan has been to extend the day for students, and then fill up the time, that time with good instructional programming completed by our own teachers. And Grossman has been working in the EVA program at a few of our schools, they've been working at part with parent groups, training groups, leadership groups. So we met today with the mayor, was there, they had Stephen Grossman and Leslie Grossman in the foundation, some of the trustees, and we just talked about Danbury, talked about so many things, the very thing that Dick mentioned about how communities working together, they're very interested. They thought the work that we've been doing collaboratively has been a real positive flow, with the support that the board has given to the programming, the Alliance Fund, I explained how that works for us, Mark has established an early childhood office out of his, in his, so those things put us in a position to ask. And they asked for was to create this EVA program, which is a tutoring program in all of our elementary schools. They asked was to ask for interventionists at the middle, middle left, to complement what we're doing with the Alliance Grant. I also asked for, because attendance, they're very active with the Nellamay Foundation, with personalized learning, and they're focusing on student attendance, they're very big on student attendance, and the dean that was eliminated from our grant, we spoke to him about what he submitted a grant to them. So I mean, it can come to about $700,000, $800,000. And we talked about sustainability, giving us money one time, we're really not interested, although I would take it. But we need sustainability, and they really understood that, and they wanna look at and fund something that they can give us over time. The data that we shared with them, much from the star work that we have done, they've been very impressed with that, and that seems to really ignite a fire engine, and so we'll see what happens. And need has been the staunch shepherd behind us, she's been nurturing it, she's been talking with them, she's been advocating, she's been actually doing a wonderful job for us in that arena, so we're really lucky to have that. Actually, we're looking for funding for next year, which I found extraordinary, they would consider this a lot. So that we did today, and stay tuned about that. With that, that is everything.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Pescarella. You're just gonna swap here the information first, and then new discussion following that. So your information is ECS Alliance Grant allocation, if there's this handout here.
Just a note for the board, the 86 is our allocated amount, so keep it in mind, working back. You can see that the lower half of the page, we did reallocate the money for Head Start, as we had indicated, it amounted to up to $50,000. We did reallocate the money that we reduced the FTE and the administrative to include more interventionists, I think we had 20?
We did have.
Twenty.
That's the best right now.
That we have. The new ECS funding, the 850 was part of that, we cut the dean of the high school, and then it was cut in some of the interventionists, we didn't get all that we wanted back in. The good news is, this is in our plan, which means that as things evolve, we can then go back to the things that we have leveraging in the grant that has made a difference for our students. If you go up above, we did reduce the administrative by one FTE, we, the DECO dean, we reduced the dean, we have someone that's gonna be about 20%, 30% of our time, that's also doing the DECO work for us, to do some of that work. We restored the climate, we're talking to their principals, they're in fact, we sat here in this room, we talked about what they can contribute, we went through the resources that we added, we added retirement, the $75,000 from Head Start, some of the other nuances in the budget. We did, they did put on the table some reduced sectioning, now that they've gotten closer towards the end in terms of student selection. They also elected not to fill one position, as at the high school, in the non-certified area, no, and as we said, there's less any jobs, we just not filled some. With all of that, we've been able to restore all of these. We have an eye on the future over Shelter Rock with FTEs, I've mentioned that to you, that's not in here, we're concerned deeply about some numbers over King Street, that's not in here yet, but as we go through the retirements, and we get through July, we'll start seeing, we think, some resources to do that. But this Alliance Grant is submitted, I think it gets as close to where you need it to be. Bill, do you have any comments, or Joe, if you have any questions?
Do any other board members have any comments?
Not so much on, on the budget, but could you put on the calendar for sometime next year to have a update to us on the DECA program?
DECA or TECA?
TECA, I'm sorry. The, you mentioned the early, early.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Probably have to. Thank you.
Just while you're dreaming about what we're doing here, we're meeting with Nogutak. Nogutak and Danbury schools were chosen out of, I'm not exactly sure how many states, but very few were recognized to have a scholarship program where, tell me out there, Joe, the scholarship for courses that the youngsters can take at Nogutak, what is that?
Pell Grants.
We were approved for Pell Grants, which is really unheard of for high school because of the DECA program. So remember, we were concerned about when they become juniors to take those courses, and we said, we're gonna do it anyway, we're looking for funding, well, they stepped up, and they said, this program is good enough for us to get scholarships, we've got old parents in, they signed the Pell Sheets, we submitted that, they'll be approved, and when they prove somebody else is taking the course, they'll be, they'll be able to get some loans, non-payback loans for Pell Grants. So that's really been a good thing to help us out, so I think it's starting to get some good momentum. We're really happy about that. And we have a few kids, I think, this year, that are gonna be taking some of those courses away. So we're early on target, so we'll do a presentation, absolutely.
Any other comments on the ECS Grant, so just wait a moment.
Joe, is there any chance to get this relocation of health insurance back? Hopefully with like the new hires signing on as singles rather than family?
Yeah, I mean, clearly, the size of the grant right now, almost 8.7, you're gonna have a lot of shifting in that grant, yeah, right? I think, I think there's some adjustments we need for that, at that point. And as Dr. Self said too, the interventionists will probably, some first restoration will make it, if we do, since, see more retirees, or shifts in hiring, that's what's up with the summer.
Is that what you would envision?
Yeah.
The FTEs for?
Well, the, well, as you know.
PHP and Shelter Rock and interventionists?
Right, that's what we're calling, yeah, the interventionists will not start until first, till we have time. The class is opening up September 1, again, we got it, and we'll do that first, but we've already been through the exercise of what we need to target, we have a good quarter in their room, and we knew exactly where we're going with that, so I have the pluses and minuses going on, I think we'll get there, but I will say this to you, and we need to use, we think, we need new teachers, we think, you know, things, we are really growing fast over at, was it the school, was it Shelter? Oh, hey, so, we're already over our expectations there, you know, where they're coming from in terms of, they're moving, they're coming to here, but we're getting more and more students into our district. So these roller classrooms that we're talking about, maybe, you know, from Manhattan City, will be the roller city.
The RON family.
That's what's gonna happen, because these kids are just coming. And Joe was in contact with the condominiums downtown.
Yeah, Kennedy Center, and what can you think?
To let us know, families that are moving in, so, you know, we're really gonna keep an eye on that first, then interventionists are next for the ed bags, so that's what we do.
Shelter Rock, clearly, we'll be focused.
And Shelter Rock, right.
Do we have any details on the equipment, a quarter of a million dollars for equipment?
That is actually a running leases that we have, in a sense, transferred into Alliance, that was the last big lease we did for teacher laptops last year. So we cemented that.
So it's just a ship?
Yeah, those, and those are running, those are five-year leases, one's $100,000, one's $150,000.
Okay, so just for the board, we vote on this in two weeks.
Yeah, according to, Bill, the full application will come back with and do a vote.
Um, revisions to the conduct code?
Yes, it's, uh, Bill?
It would be cruel and unusual punishment for me to walk you through.
Waste the whole life of your life.
Well, what the heck. Let me give you the escalated version of three codes. The first one, if you could start with the elementary, that has a substantive change in it, and if you look at the three, one just says elementary school conduct code, one says middle school, and one says high school. If you take the elementary conduct code, and you open it, so you're looking at the inside page, third column over at the bottom, it says, "No pre-K through grade two students." And instead of, again, boring you reading through this, this is a change, we used to have zero tolerance, whatever happened, happened, and you're, you've suffered the consequences. A new law went into effect, July 1, this past July 1, a student preschool through grade two may only receive an in-school suspension unless after an informal hearing, administration determines that a house school suspension is appropriate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. If you jump down a little bit, if a student brings a deadly weapon, a martial arts implement, that student will then be subject to the advantage for expulsion, as if the norm, but the thinking behind this is, we're, as a state, sustaining too many kindergarten kids, and what's that all about, kind of thing. So this new law went into effect, and we retrofitted our conduct code accordingly. If you go to the middle school conduct code, there's no change to that, we did a little bit tweaky in terms of moving a box from the left side to the right side, that kind of thing. If you go to the high school, we also took out the language on the middle school code, about zero tolerance, just so we didn't confuse people, even though it really applies to the elementary code. If you go to the high school code, there's some substantive changes in terms of verbiage, but I think it will make a lot of sense to you as soon as I quickly walk you through it. If you open the conduct code, and you look, this time, instead of the inside, you go to the back of it, and you'll see that second column where it talks about technology, this is not surprising, we used to have a whole long list of items, if you did this, if you did this, if you did this, we consolidated that down to that last box that you can see that's been cut and pasted, so you can actually see the modification. Inappropriate access and reuse of district-managed network hardware and software. And what that really refers to, it doesn't matter what you're doing with it, if we issue you a device, and you go and use that device inappropriately, it really was driven by power school issue that we had some time back, so it's inappropriate use of technology, this is a capture-all on that. Gary and I went back and forth on this, and when it does settle, we agreed that, in the event that a student brings his or her own smartphone, because we have a bring-your-own-device practice now, and they don't use our network, they have, say, 4G, so they take their own phone, and they go in, and they harvest somebody's images of something that they shouldn't be doing, such as the SAT is being taken, and they text that to somebody else, they're not using our managed device or network, but they are using another device that is of their own, we have enough in the conduct code that will cover us under a variety of fences that leaves it to occur then. So the big change then, for the high school conduct code, really is around technology. Final thing, as kind of a heads-up for the board, we would expect that this would be an ever-evolving issue at the secondary level, as technology becomes more ubiquitous, and especially as we're moving now into a more populous environment, bringing your own device at the middle school level, the same thing will apply, kids are getting very savvy with this technology of the additional natives now, and so we see this as probably the moving target. With that, everything else stays pretty much the same. I'll start one final thing, just the attendance forms, all we did is take off the term zero tolerance again, just to reflect, and it will all go into effect.
What?
Question on the attendance. I know that it has been a problem in the past where some parents have taken their children out for two, three weeks at a time, a month at a time, what happens to them? Do they just come back and go right back into their home?
No, we've changed it, that's three years ago, actually, Kathy, and students have, you know, families need to make family decisions.
Yes.
Okay, and that is a family decision, but we have the conduct code in our standards, students have been removed from the Magnet School programs, they've been dropped out of courses, they have to re-enroll into programming, because they're unenrolled, and they leave for that, that time. If there's extenuating circumstances, we will permit that to happen, but there are very few from between, so we think we're pretty solid on folks that leave a deadline for time. The high schools have taxed grades and credits, at times, doesn't impact rates and credits at the elementary particularly, but they can lose programming in other opportunities, mainly versus the Magnet School program.
Well, I guess my question is, do they come right back to the same classroom?
Yeah.
They do, but then they're behind by a month, so how do they catch up?
Well.
They don't.
Well, I can't say that unequivocally that they don't, it's very difficult.
But it's difficult for the teacher.
It's difficult for the teachers, and they really, you know, that's an issue, when they do return. You know, I will say, even Mark has talked to the council, the Hispanic council, because mainly, folks that are going to South America who have the back end pressures, and to, and even the Latino center themselves advocate, they understand the feeling, they also know the impact, but we're pretty steadfast on trying that. The most impact has been people being dropped from the Magnet School program, and being dropped from courses at the high school. If they leave, there's a waiting list, and students get into that class, and when they return, they'll go to a study.
But there is, there is no impact on families at the elementary class?
Well.
In other words, if they're supposed to be third graders, and they leave for a month at a time?
Are they retained, kind of thing?
Do they go back to second grade?
That is not after the month, but that doesn't mean they couldn't go back, but if it's because of that deficit skill, and not something else that we think being held back would benefit the child, we wouldn't do that. We're trying. And in fact, if you look at our, if you look at our attendance rate for the number of people that are there, it has declined since we've taken that position, because ultimately, we thought the students would be injured. We still have families that say, it's my choice, but then, you know, you gotta face the consequences. Unfortunately, the parents don't give kids, that's the problem, that's what it is. What I wanna note to you all is this, is because you're gonna hear things as you walk around the community, a lot of the practicing in student discipline is going to restore practices. In other words, the students were, that's why no tolerance doesn't exist anymore. And we do treat youngsters as individuals, we have general rules, but at times, there are mitigating circumstances. Not only that, now, kids aren't gonna be just put out, the law says that we shouldn't be putting out K1, 2, and 3 unless certain conditions happen. There are some faculty who resent that, I will say that bluntly, and we've had to work with them, you know, this is not legal, it's not the best interest of youngsters, so we do keep them in school. And again, some administration is getting some put back. Again, some administrations are getting some pushback. Yes, training goes with how to de-escalate situations, it's not all about just the kids, but the adults that are in, to, you know, de-escalate. But at times, students have to be put out, we do put them out. But the restorative practice, we're trying to keep them in, in in-school suspension, get them back in the classroom, get them back on the classroom. So if you hear something like, oh, they, they don't have standards of discipline anymore, not so, not so likely. And if you walk around our schools, those are muted, that makes the kids treat well, behave, and respectful, but you're always gonna have some situation going on in the classroom. So we're still working through that, we just wanna make that point. And I have to read something that just came to me. This came, though anybody that went downtown, honor veterans, students from Broadview this week, Lisa McCarthy and Christine Miller, Christine Miller is the teacher, I'm chairing a project that was the Great Child of Broadview Spanish teacher, Lisa McCarthy. Lisa brought the paints and supplies to make it happen, the beautiful Broadview rocks, literally, but what they did was to paint rocks with the words of gratitude and honor for our veterans in time for Memorial Day. We displayed the rocks in the gardens around Memorial Day, Memorial at the Denver War Memorial. Results were pretty awesome, and I've got some pictures, I'll try to share with you next time. But I've got notes from different people that have seen it, so we wanted to note that tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for sharing. Any questions on anything that's been said?
The usual.
Yeah, the only other thing is, Coop Festival, that's this Saturday, June fourth, from two A, at Denver High School, Fort York.
Rain or shine.
Okay, back to discussion on teacher evaluation.
The teacher evaluation accountability system, the last few years has, has really taken a different venue in Connecticut. As you know, it's, it's a, it's a accountability system that requires the board to approve it. We have the Marzano Plan that we follow, but it's predicated on ranking and home teams' accountability for that, for their scoring. And in working with teacher groups, I felt that the, the components that the, that teacher evaluation was asking us to assess teachers in, one is in the classroom observation, that was worth forty points, and then forty points for what we call student objectives. You set a target, and then if you achieve that target, you get a survey score. You put the two scores together, the surveys is a student survey and a parent survey, and then that goes towards the score. And we were scoring folks pretty high, some deserving, and some not deserving. The, the part that was disconcerting to me is that folks were not taking risks in the objectives. We have an achievement gap, Connecticut is a whole, that's the largest achievement gap in the nation, but they call it the Grand Canyon Gap, that's what they're referring to. And it's pretty substantial. And we're trying to make some improvements, and unless we take risks where folks will do things to make sure kids learn, so they set targets that the kids can get to, we're not gonna get it. And I didn't see us moving in that direction at the day that we were looking here. So we talked with the teachers about, what if, well, here's what happened, they would commit, Bill would do an observation of me, by the time Bill got to the door, I'd go on my computer, because it's all dark, and see what my score was. They were more concerned about the score than student learning. And this whole thing started out to improve student learning, and they wasn't doing it, it was about, who can I catch up on my job, what can I do to make my score? I mean, it was teaching going on, but not taking the risk. So we talked about, what do you need to do to make a difference? They really care about the scores, and I do not. So we started talking about the antecedents to those objectives. What do I have to do as a teacher to make students and put them in a position to learn? That in itself is more important than whether eighty percent of my kids get to a certain point if it's low end, if you get my track. So in talking with teachers, they agreed that if I get a score of three, which is proficient, and I do all the things that are best practice, at least three or four, and I'm diligent at what I do, and I get PD or whatever I do, and students succeed, but not at the rate that I would like to succeed, then I said to them, that's what I want you to do, you can't do any more, we'll get better out of practice, and give them a score of proficient, just score them proficient, not worry about scoring less than thirty. And if they get ninety percent of their kids above that, then you can give them the accident rate. For some reason, they like to be sorted that way, and the, and the state requires to have a four-point system to score them. They like that idea. They feel less threatened. Now, we'll see next year if it makes a difference in the slug, the student learning outcomes, which are objectives that they choose. The other thing that was disconcerting, the area that I think that is the most powerful is what teachers are doing in class, and the observation was being overshadowed by some of the other non-observational activities, the surveys and some of the slopes. So what we talked about was, if you're not proficient, or if you're in the area of what we call development, two years in a row in the main part of your job, party knowledge, making sure it's where your student learning, you're gonna go along the intensive plan to improve. That took some time talking to teachers, because that, in their hearts, they knew that that's really what we ought to be doing, and if we're doing that right, the kids will learn those activities. And before you now is that the pulse, a hundred percent of the work of the teacher group and the administrators. It took some time getting folks here, but I think they realized that if I'm not doing the job in the classroom, please get me help. And here's what we did. The law says one year, if you're not, if you're, what's the term, though, after one year, if they're in?
Development.
Below developing, low standard. Yeah, below standard, they have to go into a plan automatically. But if they get it developing the first year and they come to us and say we want help, we'll create a plan for them. So we put a stopgap into the second year, so someone doesn't wait till the end of the second year. Because often when you think about who's suffering, it's not the teachers. So if we can help the teachers get better, many times we can. Could be a management problem, could be a burn, it could be a planning problem, the way they run their small groups. There's definitely things we can do to help them out, to make it much more effective. And so we have that in the system now. And if that doesn't work, then they go to death country. I mean, and then it's like, either you get to what you ought to be doing, if not, the law prevents us to dismiss them for inefficiency, and that's what happens. And we have not dismissed many folks, but people have, because they see that there's not a match. I think this is, this is, this recognizes the professionalism of a teacher, makes them choose with their administrator, what are good, what's some things that can we do to make a difference, and then support them. We'll see if it starts making a difference. And that's probably in a nutshell. I had Kim look at the remediation, because it is a legal document, it follows the due process. In fact, by doing that extra year, we've extended that, you know, much more nurturing. Bill looked at the alignment between that and Marzano, which is the adopted plan, and it fits. So, you know, we'll see how it goes next year. It is a yearly plan, every year. If you don't change it, you don't have to submit, but if you do make some changes, you have to submit, and then we'll see how it goes next year. But it's before you tonight for information, it'll come to you next week for approval. And then we have to submit this.
Any questions on that?
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, Board Chair report, there's nothing to say other than next week is the week of graduation, so they're all listed at the end of the agenda. It's on Tuesday evening, and then June seventh, and then June eighth are three middle schools, at the high school, Serra Goodrivers Park at twelve thirty, and June ninth is Denver High School graduation at, at Park.
Park into Premon High School.
Give me a hand, Joe. Park at the end.
You know, the only, isn't there like a sign, a signed?
Yeah, but never works, Ralph, every time I get it.
Yeah, because nobody understands, everybody's stopping by for going.
I always park at the end. Yeah, there are, they do put some upfronts, but they have those kids out there, the renter cops, they just, and that just kinda goes away. But there are parking spots for the board, you're right.
Yeah, I heard that once, but I got a parking lot.
With your big luxury. Are board members wearing that sash?
I got them last year for you, you should have them again.
Yeah, what about the board members that we have?
Yeah, unless they're board members, but I did all the extra, I will double check them. We did buy those last year patches for you, and I will, I will check the stores. You should have them up there on Saturday.
Okay, there were no committee since we had last week, I recall, so we do have executive sessions, right?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion to go away to?
Some votes.
There are second, although in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we'll take a one-minute break.